will now come to order. In compliance with the Open Meeting Act, Nebraska revised statute eighty-four dash fourteen oh seven. A current copy of this act is posted in this meeting room. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Bulkeley.
Here.
Augustine Schulte.
Here.
Barr.
Here.
Heimer.
Here.
Jablonsky.
Here.
Creshaw.
Here.
Lor.
Here.
Roth.
Here.
Schilling.
Here.
Mayor Bulkeley, the roll has been called.
Thank you. Mrs. Council President.
Our Father. Thank you for the opportunity to serve our fellow citizens. Please give us your wisdom and guidance to make the proper decisions entrusted to this governmental body. May our conduct show respect, honor, and courtesy to each other as well as to all our citizens. Amen.
Amen.
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light, what so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming, whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight, o'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming, and the rockets were glared, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say does that star-spangled banner yet wave, o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, and welcome everyone to tonight's council meeting. If at any time during our meeting this evening, someone in the audience would like to come forward and speak to anything on the agenda, we'd ask that you come forward, give your name, your address, and we ask that you would keep your comments to five minutes or less. With that, we'll move on to the consent agenda.
Item four, consent agenda. The following items are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless the city council member or citizen so requests, in which event the item will be removed from consent status and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Item four A, minutes of the February first, two thousand twenty-one city council meeting. Item four B, minutes of the February first, two thousand twenty-one Community Development Agency meeting. Item four C, minutes of the February third, two thousand twenty-one Civil Service Commission meeting certifying police officer candidates. Taya Ekoff, Matthew Welling, and Benjamin Witipka. And additional police officer candidates Rachel Lottie, Grady Robinson, and Jordan Barichka for potential positions in the near future. Item four D, reappointment of Pat Miller as assistant fire chief for a one-year term. Item four E, resolution number R-two-one dash two-six, approving the purchase agreement with Satt Brothers Real Estate Investment Co., LLC for real property for lift station number seven, Twenty-third Street, East of Third Avenue. Item four F, Finance Department reports. And item four G, payroll and bills on file. Mr. Mayor and council, is there anything you'd like removed from consent status?
Mr. Mayor, I move that the items on the consent agenda be approved as presented.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay.
All voted aye.
Motion passes. Brings us up to public hearings.
Item seven A, public hearing, amending hours of service for the Columbus area transit for which financial assistance is being sought from the Federal Transit Administration to eliminate Sunday service from days and times of operation schedule.
Anyone here to speak against this public hearing? Anyone here to speak for this public hearing?
Mr. Mayor, move the public hearing be closed.
Second. We have a motion and a second to close the hearing. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay.
All voted aye.
How about if we hold up one finger aye, two fingers nay, or something? Motion passes.
Item seven A-one, resolution number R-two-one dash two-seven, amending the policies and procedures of the Columbus area transit to eliminate Sunday service from days and times of operation schedule.
I move for the adoption of resolution number R-twenty-one dash two-seven.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? I would ask, we had a question from the public this morning, and I think it was a good question. Just on, okay, we're eliminating Sunday, is that because of lack of use? And then we are publicizing this as a public hearing. If somebody wanted to come forward, they would have the ability to talk. Yeah, I just want the public to understand how we go through these procedures and processes.
Doug Moore is coming up to address that.
Doug Moore, Public Property Director. Over the last number of years, Sunday service, we've only averaged two rides a day. We take a lady to the Eagles Club for bingo, then we take her back home from the Eagles Club. We used to have four ladies that did that, and they were the only people who gave rides on Sunday. So this is the time we go through our budget with the state. So if we want to make any changes, this is the time we make the changes. So we just felt that Sunday, we're not back to full service yet since the pandemic. We cut our hours. We're only open Monday through Friday. So we're not open on Saturday and Sunday currently. Our numbers are about half before the pandemic. People are still scared to get on the bus, and we haven't opened the community center, and a lot of people who use the bus go to the community center. So that's how we kind of came to the decision on Sundays that the lady that we did service to get to Eagles, she's found separate transportation to get there now. So if we would open on Sunday, she probably wouldn't use it. And we are one of only three communities in Nebraska that has public service on Sunday. Us Norfolk and Omaha are the only other communities that have public transportation on Sundays. So that's how we kind of came to this decision.
Thank you, Doug. Great, great answer. Thank you. Any other question?
Excuse me, just wanted to...
Does the elimination of Sunday service jeopardize the funding?
No, but it's just a percentage of funding, so that'd be less. And we're also looking at Saturday, because basically you add Lincoln to Saturday, and that, they're the only communities that have Saturday service. So I'm going to see how it goes this next year, once we get back after the pandemic and people start, if they want to keep using it. Most of the people who use it on Saturday are now figured out that they do it during the week, they go to Walmart during the week, and those things. So maybe Saturday service might be something we don't do in the future. But I want to see how that plays out after the pandemic is over. Thank you.
Thanks, Doug. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay.
All voted aye.
Motion passes. Brings us up to seven B.
Item seven B, public hearing, consideration of blight and substandard area study by RDG Planning and Design, and determine whether attractive land known as Redevelopment Area Ten, area west of the city limits with boundaries of Highway eighty-one and Lost Creek Parkway, is blighted and substandard as defined in the Community Development Law. The Planning Commission recommends approval.
Is there anyone here this evening to speak against this public hearing?
Brett Korf, thirty-nine thirty, Forty-Eighth Avenue. And I just wanted to get some questions clarified, not necessarily voting against it or recommending against it. But on that purchase agreement that you have on there, I think it's subject to getting it, TIF financing on there. That original subject area, was that like a hundred and forty acres? And then the total area is like two sixty-eight? Is that correct, or?
It's the land that a developer has for a purchase agreement, not the city. It is a hundred and forty acres, and the total area of Area Ten is two hundred and sixty-eight acres.
Okay, and then on the two sixty-eight, then the city, are they interested in the other area, not excluding the one forty, is that correct?
Interested, I think.
Yes. Yeah, I mean, on that purchase agreement, was that for the whole two sixty-eight? Is the city involved in any of the purchasing of that? They're not. So it's whoever's looking to develop is going to do all of that then? Okay, and then as far as the farm ground out there on the whole two sixty-eight, what percentage is that? Do you have any idea on that?
I don't know. I mean...
I mean, I'm just thinking on the blighted area, is that like the old Wishbones area? Is that the area we're talking about?
Well, the blighted area that would be included is called Area Ten.
Correct.
Is the identity it gets, and it is that whole tract of land. So to those, a common reference would be Wishbones, and then the ground that surrounds that.
Okay, and then, in my understanding, is farm ground, can that be blighted then also? Is that true? Okay.
And I don't, if one of the, Janelle is one of the, do we have the map?
Yeah, I'll bring it up.
Now, we've had some problems, so maybe we can't. But we could call up the map, which is in the attachments that come with it, and it would help maybe explain, Brett.
Yeah, I just got that big, like triangular deal, but I didn't know.
Well, and you know, if we could get it up there, we might be able, I'm not guaranteeing, I'm just saying if we could.
That's fine.
There we go. There we go.
So the bluish area is the area that has a purchase agreement on it, and the whole area is the red and blue area.
So the pinkish area is not the purchased agreement area that's being talked about?
That other area qualifies as blight and substandard, so we included it. I'm expecting that other development will happen if this project...
But the developer is purchasing it all, though, is that?
No.
Just the blue area.
Just the blue area.
Okay, but you're just wanting to get TIF on maybe eventual stuff?
You're pleased to. Please do.
Every TIF area, every area designated blight and substandard in the city of Columbus is an area. It's not ever been for one specific project. So we have, the city currently has nine different blight and substandard areas, and they're in a variety of locations. So like the highway corridor, downtown, and then some other pockets of land. And as you've probably seen in the blight study, you can't designate an area blight and substandard unless they meet subjective and objective criteria. So this whole area meets that criteria. And if this development happens, we believe other development around it will happen, and they'll also want tax increment financing, most likely because of the development obstacles out here.
Okay, and then, I don't know if you need to answer this or not. On that potential development, has the city spoken with anybody about that potential development on that pinkish area at all, or you're just?
The blue area.
On the outer area there?
No, no.
Okay, that's just for future?
It's just for future, future growth.
Ready for something to happen.
Okay, okay.
We don't have to do this again.
Right, right. You do it all at one time then. Okay, okay. And then the study that the RDH did, did the developers pay for that, or did the city pay for that?
The city paid for the development, the process that got us to this point.
Okay, okay, all right.
Anything after this point that happened in that development area would be handled by a developer.
Okay, very good.
The city's objective in doing that is to enhance the ability for the city to grow and for the economic available, economic development that that could bring to the community.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else to speak against this public hearing?
Will we get a chance to speak?
Yeah, anybody.
Anytime. My question is, what, can you bring that back up? You've got land between what you have delineated as the city, and then you have all that gray area in between. So how, if you annex that purple part, how does that, how are those property owners going to be affected?
How is the area that's in blue going to be affected?
No, I see the area that's in question, but you have an area of gray area between the dotted line that says city limits?
They won't, it won't be annexed.
So we're just going to hop over?
It's not hopping over, because you can see the dotted red line if you scroll down a little bit, Janelle. The city limits touch this parcel.
But it doesn't touch the parcel in between?
It doesn't. It touches the city limits. So you can literally go from the city limits there?
No, the city limits are...
If they voluntarily, if they voluntarily annex, if TIF is approved and a redevelopment plan is approved and this purchase agreement goes through, they can't actually utilize TIF until they voluntarily annex. And they can do that because they are adjacent to the city limits at one point on the property.
They are, but the other property owners are not.
Which other property owners?
The ones in the gray alongside the...
They're not going to be in the city limits. You can, just like...
You're hopping over?
No, it's connected right there.
Down on the, way on a point.
And then if that gray area develops in the future and asks to become part of the city limits, they would then be annexed in along with those.
Yeah, the city limits is just going to have a little bubble out, but it's connected to the existing city limits. And that's happened in multiple spaces. There is actually pockets of city limits that aren't industrial tracts in the city of Columbus now. For example, the green marshy area back behind, like, in the Pershing Drive area. That's not in the city limits, but it's completely surrounded by city limits. There's industrial tracts that are not used for industrial purchase purposes that are completely surrounded by the city limits. It happens all over.
So did, did you go to them, or did they come to you and ask you to do this?
The entity that has the purchase agreement came in and said we would need tax increment financing.
Just so the city understands, or the taxpayers understand who contacted who. You just didn't drive by one day and said, well, there's two hundred and sixty acres there. We'd certainly like to blight it and then have somebody look at it.
The two hundred and sixty-eight acres is not everything they're interested in, again.
Understand.
And if they wanted to just use the tax increment financing for that parcel, they could have paid for a blight and substandard study. That has not been practiced for the last several years. All the, in two thousand eighteen, the city did a complete blight and substandards study and reaffirmation. You all know that. You were all part of the council. Like I said, we have nine areas. This would be the tenth area. And the reason that the city does this first, as Ron alluded to, is to have it in place. So when the next project comes along, it's done. We've saved eight to twelve weeks of time, and it's an easier process. And the area, we know the area qualifies, so we're going ahead and recommending that we do the whole area. Any other questions for me?
Well, that's interesting to know, to see this, because there's an individual that owns a little bit of that ground. Asked me this morning if he qualified for that. And I said, and I didn't see, you know, the full, and so...
If they're in Area Ten.
He's in Area Ten.
And they can pass the TIF BUT four test, and they make an application, yeah, they qualify.
That'll help him.
Any other comments? Any other, anyone else to speak against this public hearing? Anyone to speak for this public hearing?
Mr. Mayor, move the public hearing be closed.
We have a motion and a second to close the hearing. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay.
All voted aye. Motion carries.
Motion passes.
Item seven B-one, resolution number R-two-one dash two-eight, designating attractive land as blighted and substandard and in need of redevelopment pursuant to the Community Development Law.
Mr. Mayor, I move resolution number R-twenty-one dash twenty-eight be adopted.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution number R-two-one dash two-eight. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay.
Augustine, Barr, Heimer, Creshaw, Lor, Roth, Schilling, all voted aye. Jablonsky voted nay. Motion carries.
Motion passes.
Item seven C, public hearing, application of Ferguson Properties Incorporated for final plat and redevelopment agreement of Park Place Ninth Edition, Thirty-third Street and Forty-fifth Avenue. The Planning Commission recommends approval. The applicant's attorney was unable to finish some of these documents in time. So as you can see, this item and the two following items, there's one recommended motion to continue until March first.
So we need a motion?
There is one written in the meeting minute, in the meeting material.
Mr. Mayor, I move that agenda item seven C, seven C-one and seven C-two, public hearings, and resolution number R-twenty-one dash twenty-nine be continued to seven PM, March first, two thousand twenty-one.
Second. We have a motion and a second to continue. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay.
All voted aye. Motion carried.
Motion passes. Brings us up to reports of city offices. Our annual, or meeting report from our police chief, who is not, well, we have our captain here.
If there's any questions we can ask, otherwise there's not much update.
The letter that we've gotten from the police chief every week to give us an update actually had no activity since our last council meeting. I think in addition to that, since we're talking about the mask ordinance and what its, what its conditions are here, I would just say there was an article in the paper today, and it's, you know, being talked about. The ordinance itself, it sunsets on the twenty-third, so the ordinance will no longer be in effect. Want to thank the people for their, you know, acceptance of the ordinance. I think Columbus has done a great job. Basically, just want to ask everybody to stay vigilant and continue to support the use of masks and everything we can do and everything that's possible until we, everybody gets to feeling more comfortable with where we are. Whether that's wearing masks for a little bit longer, getting vaccinated, if that's in your, you know, where you want to be. And then, you know, honor and respect those that are doing what it is they're doing. So appreciate it for everybody, and we'll move on. Brings us up to... Where are we?
Reports of council committees.
Yeah.
Item ten A, Public Property Safety and Works Committee of February eighth, two thousand twenty-one. Item ten A-one, request of Lori Miller to vacate alley on the east side of Twenty-second Avenue, south of Twenty-third Street. The Public Property Safety and Works Committee recommends to the mayor and city council that the request of Lori Millard be, to vacate the alley on the east side of Twenty-second Avenue, south of Twenty-third Street, be approved.
Mr. Mayor, I move that this report be adopted.
Second. We have a motion and a second to adopt this report. Any discussion? I have one question. This piece of property sits by the Scooter's coffee shop, which I've never gone to the Scooter's coffee shop, but I drive by it a lot.
Yeah.
And there's a lot of traffic there. Is this alley vacating? I mean, it's not their problem, but it could become their problem. Is that something anybody's given any thought to in discussion with this owner? I mean, it's her property. I understand she can do what she wants. Are we creating possibly a nightmare and not thinking about what that traffic might be? I don't know. Do they even use that alley?
I think typically Scooter's traffic wraps around back towards the highway. But sometimes they do line up or queue up in the alleyway. One thing also to consider is that this property owner, she owns both sides, you know, but she's going to be losing some parking along Highway thirty because of the reconstruction project. So she's hoping to move those parking stalls. She's going to be losing to this area.
I'd mainly thought about it and just more or less wanted to bring it to the public attention that this is going to be going away, and if it was something people were using...
She may, she'd be able to put, you know, a fence or some sort of access control.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay.
All voted aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item ten A-two, implementation of a sidewalk improvement plan or program. The Public Property Safety and Works Committee recommends to the mayor and council that staff proceed with the survey to determine the need for implementation of a sidewalk improvement plan or program.
Mr. Mayor, I move this report be adopted.
Second. We have a motion and a second to adopt this report. Any discussion? Do you want to, Tara, just give a brief update or explanation on what we're talking about here?
Sure, I can. We periodically get complaints about sidewalks at City Hall, and we want to gauge the community's interest or level of cer, I mean, level of interest, desire in us addressing more head-on the sidewalk issue or not before we go to all the work of creating a sidewalk improvement program. I know Columbus has some history of sidewalk improvement programs or plans that didn't go so smoothly. So we really just want to be able to say, we looked into it, we surveyed the community. This is what they actually think about their sidewalks, rather than just the people that call. So the survey is a couple pages. It takes, you know, five to ten minutes to complete, and it's just going to answer some questions, going to give us information about where the respondents, what ward they live in, what their level of satisfaction is with sidewalks, if they think they're in poor condition, if they need repair, if they have any interest in doing a sidewalk improvement program. And then there's some, some information about what that might look like, so gauge their level of interest in different types of sidewalk improvement programs. So that's really, once we get all that information back, we'll be able to put a nice report together and make a recommendation on, you know, stay the same or do something different.
So this is really an information gathering vehicle to get out and find out, what do we want to do? Do we want to do anything? Whatever.
We don't want to jump the gun on doing something.
Thank you.
Was there something in that report about the city contributing something to those repairs, or is it the full?
So this is just a survey. So if the respondents to the survey say they think the city should consider, you know, putting a little bit of money in the budget every year and helping certain people with their sidewalk improvement, that if that's favorable, then we can consider doing that. But what Beatrice, for example, does is they do, if you're under a certain annual income, then up to twenty-five percent of your sidewalks can be paid for by the city, and the owner pays the seventy-five percent. And then there's also a loan program that would pick up, help them kind of extend the, so they don't have to pay that seventy-five percent all upfront, could help them kind of over time. So that's what others look like, so we put that idea in there to just get some feedback.
Right, and I guess I just bring that up because I know in our ward, we have a lot of low-income property owners, and to have to impose a cost of putting in a new sidewalk is burdensome for them, which is, I know people have complained about sidewalks, but that's part of the balancing act. You know, is, you know, how much do you impose when you know they can't afford it, so?
Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Well, and I know you incorporated in the survey an example of potential costs for a sidewalk, so people would understand, yeah, maybe I want one, oh, is that what it costs? Or yes, I mean, to address Beth's concern, because I think it is a valid concern. What is a sidewalk cost? We try to give somebody an idea what that is.
Right.
And then if you're, this survey comes back positive with people wanting some ideas, then we talk about what works and what can we do.
Right.
Awesome. All right, thank you. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay.
All voted aye. Motion carries.
Item ten B, Public Finance Judiciary and Personnel Committee of February ninth, two thousand twenty-one. Item ten B-one, operating... Item 10B1, operational and staff changes to locate all code enforcement other than parking to the Community Development Department. The Public, Public Finance Judiciary and Personnel Committee recommends to the mayor and council to proceed with operational and staff changes to locate all code enforcement other than parking to the Community Development Department.
Mr. Mayor, I move for the approval of this committee report.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Any discussion?
I don't, would you wanna explain?
Sure.
What we're talking about?
Sure. So presently, code enforcement is split between the Police Department and Community Development, and that causes confusion and efficiency issues in the public and internally among city staff, and this change, um, myself and the department heads that are affected really think that, um, it will streamline the whole process of code enforcement, make us more effective, um, with the staff that we do have. So we are recommending transferring one CST from the Police Department to Community Development and taking on all code enforcement other than parking. So that's, you know, tall grass, snow on the sidewalks, all sorts of things, um, in the city code. Go ahead, Troy.
Since, since our staff will be out and be a little more, uh, in the face of, of citizens, do they carry radios and do we know where they are at all times for safety reasons?
They do not carry radios, but we have a new system, and they're going to have, um, like a, a tablet to tr, ease, more easily, part of that code and new code software that we got, that online platform, has a really nice, um, way for them to manage all the properties that they're working on. Um, so we'll be able to kind of know where they're going and where they're at, and there's two of them, and I think, uh, most of the time they're gonna be together, especially if we expect that it's not a safe environment, and if we really expect it not to be, then they'll, um, ask for assistance from the Police Department.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other comments? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay.
All voted aye. Motion carries.
Item 10B2, uh, request for proposals for employee health, dental, and prescription insurance. The Public Finance Judiciary and Personnel Committee recommends to the mayor and council to authorize staff to send requests for proposals for health, dental, and prescription insurance.
Mr. Mayor, I move that this committee report be adopted.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt this committee report. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay.
All voted aye. Motion carries.
Brings us up to new business.
Item 13A, Northeast Nebraska Area Agency on Aging, 2022 Detailed Plan of Operation and Budget and Application for Funding for the Columbus Community Center.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the Northeast Nebraska Area Agency on Aging, 2022 Detailed Plan of Operation and Budget and Application for Funding for Columbus Community Center be approved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none? Yes, sir. Please come.
Taylor Anderson, 3653 36th Avenue. I'm just wondering if someone could explain how this ties into the vote that was already passed, um, last year to, for the bonding to approve the, for to fund the community center? I guess this is a new topic for me.
This is actually the old hospital, community, community center for, uh, where we, we have the, you know, the meals, and so you're thinking of a different situation, and this is all federally, not all, a, a lot of federal funding, so there's a yearly budget that has to be put together to detail the monies that come in, what we expect for meals and activities, and totally separate from the community center that you're thinking that will be going right across the street here.
Understand.
Okay?
Thank you.
Awesome.
Appreciate it.
And I can understand your confusion. All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay.
Motion carries.
Item 13B, comments from the mayor and city council members. In compliance with the Open Meetings Act, no discussion can be held on this item.
Do we have any comments from council members? I had a comment this evening, I, I wanted to, uh, to, to compliment city staff with the snowfalls that we've been constantly seeing and the extreme cold of recent. I wanted to compliment all our workers on the time and the efforts they've been putting in. I've received multiple positive comments on how the city looks and the job that is being done, and I've only received a few negative comments, and my assessment of those is most of them don't hold water. Many might say that it's our employees' jobs, you know, they're hired to do this, they get paid for their time, and this is all true, but the continued effort put forth day after day in terrible conditions has been awesome. Mother Nature does not look at the calendar and let, recognize that it's a weekend, a holiday, or the Super Bowl. Our employees stayed at it and were willing to forego their plans and personal commitments to address your needs, the city's needs. I wanted to just give everyone a good thank you and kudos to all of them. Okay, we'll move on to, uh, resolutions.
Item 14A, resolution number R21-30, declaring intent to issue bond anticipation notes and bonds for costs of constructing a community building, library, children's museum, art gallery, and community room in an amount not to exceed $10 million, and limited tax general obligation, certificates of participation for City Hall portion of the community building in an amount not to exceed $7 million.
Mr. Mayor, it gives me great pleasure to recommend the adoption of resolution number
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution R21-30. Any discussion?
I've been, uh, having a little bit of discussion with Tara on this before, but what, what are the costs of adding the call feature to the, um, long-term bonds, uh, the, uh, well, you know what I'm talking about, the, the, for, for the?
Sure.
City Hall.
So this, um, that resolution will come on March 1st. This resolution is really, it's called a reimbursement resolution, and it's, we're starting to issue, we're starting to pay expenses for this project, and in order for us to reimburse ourselves, once we issue a debt, we have to pass a reimbursement resolution. So this is what that is. On March 1st, we're going to have a resolution for the actual financing, and I'll be able to answer that question exactly.
Okay, you'll have to answer at that time.
Because I don't have, I don't have those exact numbers right now, but yes, we're adding a call feature, um, to both, but the bond anticipation notes, that's the three-year final, and we're gonna include a one-year call, and I'll ask that question of Cody.
And, and just to clarify, the, the bond participation notes are for one year at a time, I think they are, and we would get involved in three years of that, and my intent is to find out if there's a way to get out early?
Yeah.
If the bond market, if the cost of funds is going up rather rapidly?
And they say there is.
And we could convert to long-term financing sooner rather than later.
Right.
Any other questions? All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by aye, those opposed nay.
All voted aye. Motion carries.
Motion passes. The ordinance is on their first reading?
Item 15A, ordinance number 21-06, approving the annexation of property in part of the northeast corridor of the southeast corridor of Section 20, Township 17 North, Range 1 East, and in part of the southwest corridor of Section 21, Township 17 North, Range 1 East of the Sixth Prime, Prime Meridian, um, Platte County, Nebraska, south of the intersection of Third Avenue and 19th Street, and east of the intersection of Third Avenue and 13th Street. No motion is needed. This is a first reading. Um, a little bit of explanation, this land was purchased for the Third Avenue viaduct and has never been formally annexed into the city, so this is a, just a, really a cleanup of a viaduct we own that actually isn't in the city limits technically.
Good thing to do.
Yes.
Great.
Item 15B, ordinance number 21-07, amending sections 130.126 and 130.127 of Chapter 130 of Title 13 of the Columbus City Code regarding tobacco, electronic nicotine delivery systems, and alternative nicotine products to define the age limit as that age which is set forth in state statutes, and replace terminology referring to vapor with electronic nicotine delivery systems.
Again, first reading, no discussion?
This is, um, this is just matching state law, so we can suspend the rules and go ahead and pass it.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I move the rules be suspended in ordinance number 21-07 be read by number only.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and read ordinance number 21-07 by number only. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay.
All voted aye. Motion carries.
Motion passes.
Ordinance number 21-07.
Mr. Mayor, I move ordinance number 21-07 be adopted.
Sir.
We have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance number 21-07. Any discussion?
I just have a question. So what is that age the state has set? Is it 21?
21.
Okay.
All right, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay.
All voted aye.
Motion passes. Brings us up to consideration of payroll and bills on file.
Item 18A, ARL Credit Services.
Mr. Mayor, I ask to abstain from voting on this agenda item because I am owner of ARL Credit Services and therefore have a conflict of interest.
Mr. Mayor, I move that council member Jablonsky be allowed to abstain from voting on this agenda item and to suspend the city council rules requiring him to leave the council chambers during the discussion and vote on this agenda item.
Sir.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the bill from ARL Credit Services be approved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay.
All voted aye. Jablonsky abstained. I forgot to say that on the last one.
Motion passes. Meeting adjourned.